I'd like to call the meeting of October 17, 2025, to order. Any special intentions, Mayor?
Yes, longtime former city employee and the father of our Personnel Director Wendy Foals, Mr. William Hannan passed away this past week.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to add, too, I have an uncle who's close to me, and he passed away this morning, Uncle, my Uncle Jim, James Murray. Thank you. Anyone else? If you'll lead us in prayer, Councilwoman Dunn?
May we all please bow our heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, dear master, as we come to you this hour in the morning, God, we just want to tell you thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, upon the city of Kenner. God, look like we've been spared once again of the destructive storms. But, Father, we pray, dear God, that our city will continue to remain safe, and that, dear master, that you would look down on the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, the administration, this council, and to also the residents of the city of Kenner, that we may all work together to better the city of Kenner. And we pray, dear God, for a safe year, as we bring this year to an end, dear God, that you would continue to be with us, but give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we may do right, not only in your sight, but also in the sight of the constituents. I pray for the bereaved families today, dear God, that you would be with them, my Father. Lord, there are those around Kenner that have passed away also, dear master, but I pray that you would be with them also. And, dear God, as we continue on with the business of Kenner, I pray, dear God, that you will continue to be with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Lahad, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
Face the flag, please. Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening, this morning?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce our senator, who represents the district in this area, Senator Greg Miller. He's a valued member of the Kenner's State delegation. He is an elected official who serves along with Senator Kirk Talbert, Representative Deborah Vilio, Representative Joe Stagni. His senatorial district includes a large part of the southern part of Kenner. He is a big help to the city of Kenner and fights for us in Baton Rouge during the state legislative sessions. He is a well-seasoned legislator. I am referring to Senator Greg Miller. His background: graduate of De La South High School, New Orleans, 1980; graduate of Louisiana State University with a BA in Political Science, 1985; and a graduate of LSU Paul Kaver Law Center with a JD Juris Doctorate in 1988. He is a former state representative and now a state senator who represents District 19, which is a very large area. He serves on the following committees: Chairman of Jude A., Local and Municipal Affairs, Senate and Governmental Affairs, Joint Legislative Committee on the Budget, and Legislative Budgetary Control Council. Senator Miller, if you will, please step up and introduce yourself and tell us some of your accomplishments, sir. We appreciate you coming this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Womack, and it is a great privilege and honor to be here, in the city of Kenner, in Senate District 19, which I represent. And the wonderful thing is, you know, Kenner is near and dear to my heart. My mom grew up eight blocks from here, where my grandparents lived, on Airline Highway between Williams and the airport. She went to Our Lady of Perpetual Help and then graduated from Kenner High School. And then they moved two blocks closer to the airport, as if it wasn't loud enough, on Oxley Street by the Butch Dewey Gym. And so I grew up coming to Kenner, and I have a special place in my heart for this and the people of Kenner, especially all around the airport in South Kenner, and also in the area of Lincoln Manor and the university section, and Susan Park, all of that is part of the district. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, one of my council members here, Dee Dunn, is we care a lot about trying to deal with blight. And part of my, as an practicing attorney, I do a lot of property-related law, successions, estate planning, trying to put people in possession of their properties. And so a lot of my legislation deals with property matters and trying to, and indirectly deal with blighted property. We, last year, we changed the small succession procedure or reformed it to make it easier for people and cheaper for people to be able to get record ownership of their property, and that helps with blighted property and trying to be able to clear up titles. We also, the biggest thing that I've probably done was, we've reformed our tax sales process, not sales tax process, but tax sales, when property taxes are delinquent, the process by which you sell it. So we've gone from a sale of the property to a sale of a tax lien. The tax sale system we've had now has led to a lot of zombie properties that you can't ever get title insurance, you can't get clear title. The voters voted for the constitutional amendment last year, and we've changed, we've been updating that, working with the sheriffs and working with the local municipalities about, and the governing authorities, try to make sure that when it's implemented this coming year, we don't have any hiccups. And then, speaking of blighted property, we were talking about Kenner City Hall and the difficulties that we're having trying to get that funding for insurance. And I just submitted, one of the things that we do as legislators is we support and try to get money that our communities and our cities, such as Kenner, have requested. So we have submitted that letter of support on behalf of the city of Kenner to the Division of Administration Commissioner Taylor Barra, and one of those requests includes $17 million for the construction of a new city hall. Of course, it's a long process in the Capital Outlay project, but one of the things that we concentrate on, that I'd like to concentrate on, is infrastructure, roads and drainage. And you'll see in the Capital Outlay that have gotten, in the Capital Outlay process last year, and that we'll see this year, is roads and drainage, Lincoln Manor drainage, Roosevelt roadway repairs, new fire station for Kenner Fire Department, Susan Park drainage, Compromised Street drainage, Curtis Avenue drainage. And so, we're going to continue to fight for Kenner. And again, it is my great honor to be able to represent this city, which I, which there's no doubt it's one of the most dynamic and most diverse cities in the state, and I'm proud to call this one of my homes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Miller. We appreciate you coming this morning and letting me introduce you and so forth. And I also want to say that I inadvertently omitted one of your leadership roles in the Senate. You're also the Chair of Senate Parliamentary Affairs, too, so it's a good leadership role.
Senate Parliamentary, so I get to advise President Henry how to rule when he has issues about rules, so.
Thank you for all your leadership roles, and thank you for your help with the city of Kenner and all that you do for us.
If you don't have my cellphone, make sure you get it. Hopefully, everybody has my cellphone, and always feel free to contact me with any issues that you have, so.
Thank you, Senator Miller. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Yes, I do.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you, Senator Miller, for being here. We have a great relationship, and every time I pick up the phone, you answer. And I thank you for the funding that you've been securing for my district in particular, but Kenner as a whole. So we just want to thank you for being so active and having that relationship with us, and thanks for being here this morning.
Sure. I just have, we have to add one thing. Thank you, Councilman Dunn. This is one of the few times I've come to Rivertown where I'm not spending money. Usually, I'm coming here to spend money at all of the fine restaurants and at the theater and the musicals that are put on, so it's a wonderful jewel we have here.
Chief Connolly?
Yeah, we're not out of Rivertown yet, so hold on to your wallet. But I do want to echo Councilwoman Dunn, and thank you for all the support you've given the Police Department. You know, we've been very active with Capital Outlay projects, to two and a two or three million dollars, and I know that comes with the support of your office as well, so thank you and the rest of my delegation for keeping us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Miller.
All right. Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
Y'all have a great weekend.
Thank you. You, too. Next, Mayor Glaser, with your report, sir.
All right. Guess I should pay attention, right? Several meetings ago, y'all voted on the American Cruise Line legislation. Happy to say, Wednesday, we got an email that the agreement is signed and executed, and their planning crews are going to be on the ground here in Rivertown in the next couple of weeks. So their goal date is still to have it completed by the end of next year and start sailing in '27. Trunk or Treat is tomorrow, 5:00 PM, at Musburgerlino, and following, at dock, they're going to have a showing of Monsters Inc. on the relatively new scoreboard, the video screen, Thursday, November 6th, which I guess is our next council meeting. Before that, at 10:00 AM, is Veterans Day Celebration in Veterans Park. And as you're walking up to this building, this has been a project that's been taking a little longer than I had hoped for. All the windows in this place are being replaced. Just one more step of making this building watertight so we can kind of put it back into commerce and in more use in the near future. And I'm going to kick it over to Chief Connolly for a couple of comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So tomorrow is our National Night Out Against Crime kickoff party at the Ponce Train Center parking lot from 11:00 to 3:00. This is the kickoff, everybody knows Tuesday night is the actual Night Out Against Crime. We're encouraging people to sign up their neighborhood block parties for first responders to come by and visit. You can do that at kennerpd.com. But tomorrow, 11:00 to 3:00, free food, free drinks, over 20. Local agencies and first responders from fire departments, EMS, police departments will be on display. It'll be a hands-on activity for children as well as adults. We're going to have demonstrations put on by the fire department, SWAT team, K-9, and drone patrols as well. It's always a good time. Top Cats will be playing from 11:00 to 3:00. We will have a large screen TV, thanks to Pelican Events. When the SEC changed the LSU game time, we realized, you have Councilman Branigan out there, we're going to have to put a TV out there. So we will have a large screen TV next to the stage that'll be playing the game, but all the food is complimentary. They have all been provided by sponsors such as Blue Runner, CRC, Coca-Cola, Walmart. I know I'm going to leave somebody out, but it's a good time had by all. It'll be over by 3:00, but everything's free, so please come out and meet up with your first responders, see what is provided to you through the city of Kenner to keep you safe and take care of you, and I think you'll be pretty impressed. Thank you.
Finish, Mayor? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next, under correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads, at the request of the legal department, an executive session regarding Martin Sacks versus the city of Kenner, Jacob Schnelker, 24th Judicial District Court, number 851-399-Division-B, and Southern Cat USA LLC versus the city of Kenner, United States District Court, Eastern District of Louisiana, number 25-CV-01482-Section-D. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to adjourn into executive session. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes 7-0. The council will be now in executive session and will return shortly.
Call the meeting back to order from executive session. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mayor, will you finish with your comments? Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to reconvene from executive session. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request from the administration to add item three D, application number twenty-five dash zero one six, Audrey Reyno, to hold a public gathering on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, from seven-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM for the purpose of a Halloween block party at one ninety-four through one ninety-eight Jelby in Kenner, Louisiana. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to the council adding this to the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to add the item to the agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of October second, two thousand twenty-five. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number twenty-five dash zero one-two, Chris Alfers, to hold a public gathering on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, from six PM to ten PM for the purpose of an annual Halloween block party in the two-hundred block of Cotton Bayou Lane. Item three B is application number twenty-five dash zero one eight, Williams Boulevard Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, from four PM to six PM for the purpose of a fall fest at three thousand Williams Boulevard. Item three C is application number twenty-five dash zero two four, Our Lady of Perpetual Help Roman Catholic Church, to hold a public gathering on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from four PM to six PM for the purpose of a Saint Rosalie procession in Riverside. Item three D is application number twenty-five dash zero one six, Audrey Reyno, to hold a public gathering on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, from seven-thirty to PM to eleven-thirty PM for the purpose of a Halloween block party at one ninety-four through one ninety-eight Jelby. And that will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to approve the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-two, and ordinance amending ordinance eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-seven, adopted February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to allow the construction of a storage warehouse on parcel D dash three dash A two dash A, Highway Park subdivision, the WWL track, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, as shown on a survey by BFM Corporation LLC dated June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and site plan by Burke Klein Peter Incorporated dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, which property is owned by the Treasure Chest Casino LLC. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to open your public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. We have a presentation by the planning department, and then the public will be able to speak on the item.
Good morning, everyone. Chris Lewinsky, Director of Planning. This case is PUD one twenty-five. This is, case is to amend ordinance eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-seven, which was adopted on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This proposal will allow the new construction of an approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred square foot storage warehouse and approximately forty thousand six hundred square feet of new parking and driveways to service the warehouse on parcel D three A two A. The owner is Treasure Chest Casino LLC, fifty-fifty Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, and the applicant is Richard Cortezes of Jones Walker, two oh one St. Charles Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana. The subject site fronts Joey Yanni Boulevard and is generally bounded by the Ponchatrain Center access road to the north, Williams Boulevard to the east, and Horseshoe Road to the west. Parcel D three A two A is currently developed with a surface parking lot for casino patrons. An early neighborhood meeting was held on July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, at the Treasure Chest Casino Magnolia Ballroom A at forty-five forty Williams Boulevard. The applicant reported that one neighbor attended the meeting in addition to District Three Councilman Joey Lahat and representatives from the Treasure Chest Casino. The only issue raised was the impact of the proposed warehouse would have on traffic specifically behind the Coconut Beach area roadway. The applicant noted that the warehouse is not expected to cause any increase in traffic as the warehouse will be used for the storage of equipment and not regular servicing of the casino. The planning department did not receive any calls regarding this case. The new warehouse will be built south of the existing surface parking lot. The site plan indicates that vehicular traffic will enter and exit the warehouse via driveways connecting to the existing surface parking lot to the north. There will be no direct access to Joey Yanni Boulevard. Site plan shows that mechanical equipment will be situated on the east side of the warehouse with a loading dock on the north side. There will be nineteen parking spots for the warehouse with two of them dedicated to handicap parking. An existing drainage retention pond slash retention pond located on the southwest quadrant of the property will be enlarged to assist in the stormwater management for the site. A stormwater management plan was submitted and reviewed by the city's consultant, and while there were some deficiencies, the applicant is having those deficiencies addressed. Please note that no permits will be issued until all deficiencies have been addressed. The landscaping plan was reviewed by the city's landscape plan reviewer. Their proposal was found to need fifty-four trees and two hundred and fifty shrubs, but the actual proposal shows eighty trees and two hundred and twenty-nine shrubs. The twenty-six extra trees are more than sufficient to cover the shrub deficiency. The proposal is therefore compliant with our landscaping regulations. There will be no signage associated with the warehouse. The planning commission heard this case on September twenty-fourth, and they recommended approval. That is all I have.
Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, I attended the neighborhood meeting, and there was no one there. I received no opposition to this. Boyd, Boyd Gaming, Treasure Chest Casino needs this warehouse to store items. I have no problem with this at all. They're a great partner with the city of Kenner, and no one has called me opposing this anywhere. And I don't think the planning director has gotten any opposition either. So I'm in favor of it, if anyone wants to know my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to, okay, come on up and state your name for the record? You have three minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmot. My name is Ryan Nugent, and I live at fifty-four forty-four Erlanger Road in District Three. First off, I didn't know anything about this. I don't think most of our neighbors know anything about this. The notices were sent out to people in immediate proximity, which is basically a couple blocks around the site, so that means people in Lake Trail, Aqua Vista, Driftwood. We didn't receive any notice about this development. So what I had planned to say was, the last conversation I had with the late, great Al Morella was about the treasure chest, and it really stuck with me. Neither of us was a fan of the new property, so, Mr. Morella, this one is for you. I'll start with the new casino itself, and I won't parse words. It's ugly. It's a giant box with absolutely no character that completely ignores the existence of its waterfront location. I'd say it looks like a Walmart with a portcochere, but the fact is, I've seen Walmarts that are significantly more attractive. I know the city of Kenner was desperate to keep the treasure chest within its borders, but the fact remains that the opportunities that come with a PUD application were squandered. By that I mean a PUD is an opportunity to hold a developer to a higher standard, and if that building is any indication, they most certainly were not. And I know I'm not alone in this opinion, and I know it's not just me and Mr. Al either. It's an opinion shared by every single friend, neighbor, and colleague I have ever spoken with on the matter. Moving across Williams to the site in question, we already have the sort of sea of concrete parking lot that our code specifically prohibits, and I'd love to know why that configuration was allowed. Regarding the proposed warehouse structure, it's yet another generic box with zero character. The The exterior is gray something, maybe stucco, I can't be certain because the provided documents don't actually indicate a cladding material. Is this really what we want to spend the next few decades looking at at the head of one of Kenner's most attractive thoroughfares? For God's sake, what would Joey Yanni think? As for the proposed landscaping, it looks wonderful. RCI is the cream of the crop when it comes to landscape design, and I've worked with them personally. My question for Boyd Gaming would be this: Why are you, as a corporation, so dead-set on cheaping out on the appearance of your structures but totally fine with spending huge amounts of money on landscaping? As I said, I've worked with RCI, so I have a very good idea of how much this proposed landscaping irrigation will cost. Suffice it to say that it would be more than enough money to give the proposed building some actual character, and it would be more than enough money to give us less of an eyesore to look at for the next forty years. Again, the landscaping is nice, but we're talking about living things that are by nature fleeting and not permanent. Though I think this is an unfortunate use for a very nice piece of property, I am not in principle opposed to the presence of a warehouse on the site. However, I am asking the council to reject the current proposal until such time that Boyd can return with a more attractive design for the primary structure. I implore you, please, especially those have, who have previously expressed dissatisfaction with the nature of the existing development, please do not let them do this to our community for a second time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and the address for the record, or district.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Richard Cortezes, two oh one St. Charles Avenue, on behalf of Treasure Chest. First of all, I want to say thank you to the council for taking up this matter. As Chris mentioned, this is an amendment to an existing PUD. It's an amendment that will allow for a storage warehouse where there is a surface parking lot right now. The notices that went out for the early neighborhood meeting met the legal requirements. So to suggest that notices were not sent out or were not appropriately sent out is in error. And there was ample opportunity, and there was ample opportunity to reach out to planning, Treasure Chest, and other officials with regards to any question that they might have had between the early neighborhood meeting and today's meeting, and also the planning commission's meeting. I want to particularly thank Councilmember Lahat, who attended the meeting. There was one other individual that attended, from Churchill, that attended the meeting, and the only issue that they had, and it was a valid question, is would there be any increased traffic? Absolutely not, because this is not going to be part of its normal commercial use. This warehouse will be strictly for storage. Landscape is being improved. Additional trees will be planted and added. There will be no sign on the building. And again, this is not for the regular commercial use. It's a storage warehouse, which internally is required by state law for the storage of gaming equipment. So the reason why Treasure Chest is actually building the storage warehouse is because state law requires that when they repair or service gaming equipment, that they be stored in a secured facility, and that's, that's the reason for the storage. So I appreciate the council's time, consideration, and would request approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
And happy to work with anyone that may have suggestions while we're constructing the building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taft? Damon District?
Greg Taft, Fifth District. The only thing that I want to comment on is if what we sent notices to the people that were the closest proximity according to our charter and bylaws, sometimes on something like this, I don't know why we wouldn't want to include, especially adjunctive areas that would be affected by it. I don't have an opinion one way or the other about it, because it, I can understand a storage area that a company needs, and that's what their property is supposed to be able to accommodate for them. But my comment is basically, maybe we should look at the parameters when we notify people, especially since that area does cover or is surrounded by driftwood and such, so that those residents do have a chance and an opportunity to express any concerns they may have had with it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a, I have a comment.
Mayor?
Yes. Everything we do around here is public notices. The planning, public notice, everything's noticed. If you see something, all you gotta do is look, find out, click on the button, and find out exactly what they're doing. We go above and beyond notifying the public what we have, because it's several steps before it makes it to this body. It goes to the planning commission, back and forth. All that's advertised. It's not to just pop up here today and y'all voting on something that you know nothing about. This has been read in at least two other forums. So it has been advertised. Everything we do, it goes the surrounding neighborhood. This is just a bigger, a bigger warehouse. And unfortunately, I do disagree. Again, I think the Treasure Chest Casino is a pretty good-looking building. If you're a minimalist, that's what you, you like. You don't like all the guardy stuff that goes out of, fifteen years from now it's going to be, you know, out of vogue, or it just looks bad. So, that's my two cents. And they've been a pretty good partner for their, their, their existence in the city of Kenner. So that's, that's it.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Seeing no further comment, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to close your public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to approve. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of removable property. We have none. Item ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item twelve A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-three, an ordinance repealing ordinance number twelve thousand eight hundred and amending Chapter Fifteen Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article Two, Section fifteen dash twenty-three, subsection C of the Kenner City Code of Ordinances. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Can we get, get an explanation on this one?
Well, I can answer it. I mean, it's in, it's in the legislation. It's, it was a typo on one of the trucks prohibited signs on Delaware Avenue at his intersection with Twentieth Street and Twenty-first Street. So.
I had met with the residents in there. For some reason, on Delaware, that one block was the only block that was not a truck route. So for some reason, it was left out, and we just wanted to add it in there, and it just happened to be an error in the ordinance, things like that, and we're just trying to correct the legal definition of it. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for the record, for clarity purposes. Thank you. Anyone else?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item thirteen A is a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number Eleven of the Rules of Organization, Business Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council Agenda Deadlines to Friday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-six, at noon for the council meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six, and Friday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-six, at noon for the council meeting of February twentieth, two thousand twenty-six, and Friday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-six, at noon for the council meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-six, and Friday, October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, at noon for the council meeting of November fifth, two thousand twenty-six. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen B is a resolution authorizing a placement for temporary signs on public property for Discovery Health Sciences Academy benefiting the Discovery Health Sciences Foundation. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen C is a resolution authorizing a settlement and the claim entitled "In Regards to Martin Sacks versus the City of Kenner, Jacob Schlechner, twenty-fourth Judicial District Court Number Eight-five-one dash three-nine-nine Division B." I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen D is a resolution calling a public hearing on November sixth, two thousand twenty-five, to determine whether the structures located at twenty-seven hundred Phoenix Street, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen E is a resolution authorizing a settlement to the claim entitled "In Regards to Southern Cat USA LLC versus the City of Kenner, United States District Court Eastern, District of Louisiana Number Twenty-five dash C V dash zero one four eight two, Section D." I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Black Star Diversified Enterprise to purchase two message board centers in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-four and an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five, an ordinance approving the use of State of Louisiana Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-four-eight-six-four with Swift Recreation LLC for the removal of existing playground structure and surfacing, and to furnish and install the new playground structure and first surfacing at Musburger Lino Playground in the amount of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-three cents for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-six, an ordinance accepting the quote received from Control Systems Incorporated to upgrade the city's existing SCADA system in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars for the wastewater department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Nitsim Promotional Manufacturing Corporation to supply pressure-sensitive brake tags and inserts in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-five and an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the Inspection and Code Enforcement Department. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Restech for the purchase of IT supplies for the new fire station in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one ninety-one and an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy cents for the Information Technology and Telecommunications Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ace Garage Door Company LLC to remove, furnish, and install a new overhead door and operator at Fire Station Two-seven-nine in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one eighty-six and an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars for the Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance authorizing the citywide use of Louisiana State Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-three-three-four-two-two with vehicle parts and equipment incorporated to furnish and install light bars and sirens in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving an agreement with the Reserve Component for federal lobbying and advocacy services in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Item sixteen F is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the State of Louisiana, Department of the Treasury, and the City of Kenner for the purchase of lighting and equipment for park improvements. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from New Light Electrical Wholesalers to purchase lighting materials for string lights on Williams Boulevard in Rivertown in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty forty-eight and an amount not to exceed eight thousand one hundred dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance repealing ordinance number twelve thousand nine hundred fifty-two and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Armstrong Supply Company to purchase materials for lighting at Rivertown Parking Lot in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash thirty thirty-nine and an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and forty cents for the General Services Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Havana Knights LLC to furnish and install Retroflex Solar LED off-grid systems at Megas Park in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine seventeen and an amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilwoman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Council Clerk. I just want to announce that on this Tuesday, October twenty-first, my district will be sponsoring the Night Out Against Crime at Susan Park Gym between the hours of five and eight PM. We are going to go to the other night out against crime, but we're also going to have a big celebration of this. Also, at this event, we are going to be launching and asking that the residents of District One do a little bit more in helping to keep our district clean, like cleaning up in front of the doors, the streets, or whatever, because we get a lot of complaints about that. So we welcome everyone that will come out. We welcome the council, the police chief. We're going to culminate at Susan Park Gym, even though before I get there, we will be at the other night out against crime in our district. Thank you.
Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to recognize that our council clerk's birthday is coming up on October twenty-first, so I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
I'm glad she made it to twenty-nine. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Councilmember Brennan would like to speak.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you. Just real briefly, this is not to start a fight, this is just to make a comment. At the last meeting, it was said that we need to take care of the firemen and, and things like that, and it, it, it just made me think. So I requested how much money, above and beyond budgeted money, any money from the administration, that the council has put up since 2018? And, and just by, by district, we were able to get a report from Ms. Harrington, but just for the record, since 2018, we have spent out of district funds for additional equipment and items needed for the total amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. The Fire Department has received almost a hundred and sixty thousand of that, and the Police Department, right over ninety thousand. So we do, as a council, and I know I speak for my colleagues, certainly appreciate the men and women of the Police Department, the Fire Department, all city employees, everybody. But we certainly want our firefighters, we want our Police Department to be safe and to have the necessary equipment to make their jobs easier and better, and for the safety of our citizens. So your council is, is very much in favor of that, and I, and I think this just shows one small part of what we do for those departments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Brennan, thank you, Councilman Wilmot. Yesterday, I went over to Station Thirty-seven with Assistant Chief Jason Dyer to go over the, what was discussed last time of the faulty type of repairs. Lots changed in the last three weeks. Looks a ton better, and it doesn't excuse the bad work that was done initially, but they have ripped out all of the ridiculously looking sockets they'd put in that were cracked. They had renewed that shower floor. They have fixed that wall inside the firehouse. I actually walked into the bedroom barracks upstairs, and I don't like the way it looks. I think they should have some more privacy, so I'm talking with Mark Glorioso right now about we're going to separate those rooms with- about we're gonna separate those rooms with partitions to give the firemen and the women too, uh, privacy in that bedroom area, so I'm working with, uh, Chief Dyer right now about allocation on that. I'm also, we, I just purchased positive pressure fans that we're gonna talk about in the meeting Monday, about thirty-eight thousand, so, um, that they requested for their initiatives, but, um, I'm on top of Thirty-seven. That situation should've never happened, and excuse it, but it is being rectified, um, lot better than it was three weeks ago, but I'm out there continuously to make sure that happens. But obviously, we do support the Fire and Police Departments here in Kenner, and I'm happy to keep, always discuss with, with both chiefs about further ways we can help. Thank y'all.
Councilman Branigan?
Oh, yes, uh, I wanna, uh, wish IT Director, Kenneth's birthday is today, so everybody, let's wish him a happy birthday. Yeah. Councilman Swarth?
Yeah, Councilman Lahat, um, I'm glad you and I was able to go over Station Thirty-seven and look at, uh, some of the deficiencies that have been corrected. Um, tell you that I, we still got, uh, work in progress here, there's still more things to be repaired, there's some things that have been repaired that I still don't like, and, um, I'm hoping, working with, uh, Chief Dyer and with Mr. Gloriosa, there he is over there, to, um, to upgrade and fix those last little knick-knack things, all cosmetic, that needs to be, um, finalized and done. Uh, alarm system in the fire station will be, um, replaced and upgraded, and again, uh, strobes, signs, um, sprinkler system, the whole thing. So, there's still work to be done, we're working on it, and I'm not gonna let it pass unless it's something, a house that I could live in. I'm not gonna have it for these guys. We've done too much in the past where it was adequate, and I don't think this was adequate. So, guys, I'm working with you, Nick, Matt, Brian, all, um, Chief Michelle, all of you guys, I'll be with y'all, standing on side of you, and we're gonna get it done, we're gonna get it done right, okay? Thank you.
Chief Collin?
Yeah, basically, it just, you know, I've beat this drum enough at every community meeting, civic meeting, uh, and I think the Fire Chief will, will agree, but I, I wanna thank you for not just this support, but during budget hearings, during, um, all our other discussions, this council's always been there for the men and women of, of the Kenner Police Department. Uh, you've never told us no, as a matter of fact, with the council's assistants, we're standing up in ICAAC lab with the Police Department to attack child predators online. Um, you know, we've, we've got a substation now out by the lake, so I just wanna thank you not just for the discretionary funds, but for all the support that we've received through the council, the mayor, the administration, uh, 'cause we could not do our jobs unless we all work together, so I just wanna, wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Madam Clark?
Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
First up, we have Ms. Amy Hotard. Name and address, please, or district.
Amy Hotard, District Five. Um, I appreciate the comments of council regarding contributions to KFD, uh, and their recent efforts to fix Thirty-seven, but we all saw the photos of the unacceptable work that was going on at the fire station. I watched the last meeting and I heard claims of unawareness, I've heard the work wasn't gonna be accepted, and we appreciate that it's not, but the fact is that KFD leadership accepted the work and the firemen were moved back into the station, so to say anything contradictory or contrary is contradictory, uh, and to only backtrack once social media gets involved is a bit concerning. Even more disappointing were the claims of unawareness. This is not the first time this quality of work was done at a fire station and accepted. This contractor's not new and has been working with General Services for years. For example, June first, twenty twenty-three, the council approved DOM development to provide labor-only carpentry services post hurricane up to two hundred thousand. Fifteen days later, separate ordinances were proposed, one, increasing an ongoing agreement with that contractor not to exceed five hundred thousand, two, another separate sealed bid in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand annually. Then on June sixth, twenty-four, this council increased the post hurricane amount from two hundred to four hundred and extended it a year. So between twenty-three, June of twenty-three and twenty-four, this contractor has had contracts with the city which appear to have the value of up to and which could exceed a million dollars for labor only, and we are unaware of the quality? I'll skip to the kicker. On July twenty-fifth, twenty-five, this council approved another separate sealed bid to this contractor not to exceed three hundred thousand annually for general services work, but it's not the money alone. The docs attached to the agenda include the contractor's license with an expiration date of seven twelve twenty twenty-five. In other words, that license was not in good standing at the time that three hundred thousand dollar bid was awarded on July twenty-fifth. The license lapsed, but the bid was not rejected, our contracts pulled. Regardless of whether that license was later reinstated the following month, this is about oversight. Taxpayers expect more, to say we're unaware of the work we are paying for isn't acceptable. The city couldn't find money in the budget to pay firemen a raise. They also choose to appro- approve a pay change that took away the raises that they were receiving for years, and that's after they got a millage from the taxpayers for pay increases, but yet they will use taxpayer money to pay a contractor for labor-only work to the tune of six, possibly seven figures for a product we can all agree is unacceptable. We cannot accept the excuse that no one knew about it. We also can't allow KFD leadership to continue to do one thing and say another. This is not about one job, it's about the breakdowns, the contradictions, and the willingness to accept excuses that fly in the face of facts. If you wanna fix it now, and when there's public outcry, don't stop at this one job, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hotard. Next, we have Matthew Hotard. Name and address or district. Thank you.
I'm Matthew Hotard, Fifth District. Uh, firstly, I wanna say thank you to the council, um, in my time as the president and even on this Fire Department, I'm very aware of what you've done for us as far as furnishing us with the tools to allow us to properly do our job and do it efficiently, so it doesn't go unrecognized by the men and women of the department. The real reason I'm here, there's a lot of discrepancies about the Station Thirty-seven thing. Um, I too listened to the, the last meeting, but I never heard anybody say the real reason why, or talk about even why, we were moved back in so quickly. Now, I did hear someone say something about coverage. Well, yes, the station's closed, but coverage was not nearly in the deficit that it was in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen when the flyover came in, Station Thirty-eight was knocked down, and the Fire Chief moved Station Thirty-eight, which if you don't know is at the south end of Loyola, into our squad, which is on Williams. We had three trucks in Station Thirty-seven, which is the station we're talking about, nothing on the south side of Loyola, nothing, and this was something that we talked about as a department consistently, an entire area not covered, okay? Very dangerous. It wasn't until a fire that almost claimed an infant's life, magically weeks later, we had a trailer. It should not take that. So, for, to hear that it's a coverage issue, that doesn't fly with me because I'm part of the Fire Department and I know what the coverage is like, okay? So that's number one. The real reason, the real reason why we were rushed back into that station has to do with ladder three seven seven, which is the largest truck that we have, a hundred-foot ladder, being outside. There's no station that could house it. It was housed temporarily at the temporary Station Thirty-five, the old break tag station where it could not fit in the bay, so they put it in the park of the driveway. Every time it turned up, it ripped the street up. That street is atrocious from multiple reasons, but they couldn't put it there, so they parked it on the street. Look, the chief didn't like it, we hated it. Having to respond to calls, whether it's during the day or the middle of the night, run out to the truck and whatever the weather, weather conditions are, and then get to a call is a pain in the butt. It's rough, but we didn't like it either, but our station was being fixed. So, fast forward to being moved into the station early. Before that, ladder three seven seven was taken out of service, not because it wasn't broken, not because it didn't work, because we didn't want it on the street. That truck was parked at Station Thirty-seven under a covered bay for, I don't know how many days, but a little over a week. While that truck was out of service, we then took that truck and went and made a social media post about saving a bird out of a light. Guess what truck we used? Ladder three seven seven. We were given a piece of junk, one that should not even be a frontline truck, uh, pumper, or a truck in general. It wasn't till that truck couldn't work anymore that we put ladder three seven seven back in service. My main gripe is that we are taking a viable piece of our equipment, the only truck that has that capability, to put it under a covered area, a truck that is built to withstand fire, chemicals, smoke, that's what they're built for, but we take it out of service or we rush the men and women back into a station when it's not finished, regardless of what the state is of the station, because we wanted a truck covered, and to me, that is a hundred percent unacceptable. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me while I'm up here?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Stephen Dunn. Name and address, or district for the record.
Stephen Dunn, uh, Four Saint Christopher, District Five. Uh, the last meeting I came up, and the reason I came up was 'cause I saw the, what was done at Station Thirty-seven, and my main goal was really to bring to our attention the money that we were wasting. So, when I came, the day that I saw it was the day that I came to this meeting. When I came, Ms. Catherine Topol, which was the head of, uh, Code Enforcement, she told us that, that nobody could babysit the job. Well, I then found out through public records request that there was never a permit pulled for this job, there were never any inspections. Now, we had, the reason that the guys were out of the station and the work was being done was because they were mediating mold, so we don't have anything even letting us know that the mold remediation was done, done, done correctly, or, or anything, 'cause there are no inspections or no, no, uh, nothing to prove that there was anything done. So, the problems we're looking at were on the surface, and if the surface was that bad, what does it look like behind the scenes? Now, I'm not doubting that any of y'all don't have feelings for the Fire Department and everything else. My, my concerns were about what we're spending as public for our mon- what we're getting for our money, uh, you know, so, we look and, you know, he had no electrical permits, he had no, uh, mechanical permits, or all of those things required for these, uh, when we work on public buildings. Um, the mayor claimed and, and said that, you know, he was tired of spending money over and over, and I get it, I am too, it's, it's, it's a public's money, but, you know, if they ought to tear it out, like he, he said at the end, we would have an inspection that was never gonna come, and if it wasn't satisfactory, they would then tear it out. Well, my understanding is DOM construction does this work, and, and it's, the, the materials are at the city's cost no matter what, so yeah, if they tear it out, it costs him nothing, but it costs us again. Uh, I just don't, don't see this being feasible for us to throw our money away like this. And, and the, the chief, the police chief says, you know, he likes what the council's done, he works with, they work with him, if we had an elected Fire Chief, maybe then he could work with the council in the same aspect and fight for things that the Fire Department needs, not just a remodel because of, because of a mold remediation that we know nothing about and probably will never know anything about. It's just, uh, it just, it's just ridiculous, and, and I heard how much money we were spending with this particular contractor, and it's labor only, so he's got nothing to worry about. You know, it's just ridiculous. I think it needs to be looked into a lot further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next, we have Mr. Greg Teft.
Uh, Greg Teft, Fifth District. Um, a lot of, a lot of folks have, uh, pointed out a lot of things that I would've brought up, but I think it boils down to really one thing, compliance. Who oversees the compliance? There was, when we have these buildings going up, or we have work going on, eh, on city property, city buildings, it, it sounds to me like there's a compliance oversight breakdown, and that may, that may be something we should go look at and consider, because a lot of companies have compliance officers that make sure policies are being followed, the work that, uh, the money that we're spending on having something built or rebuilt, remodeled is in compliance and being done on time, and it meets the standards. So, that sounds, that to me is probably a big part of the problem, but there's no doubt that what we have now within the Fire Department has, in my opinion, there's probably some waste that we've created for ourselves for not doing it right the first time, and that's very concerning, and the taxpayers of this city are the ones that's funding them. And I'm not saying that we're not trying, but I will say this, I think Facebook and other social media sites brought the attention instead of the attention coming from within. That's where compliance comes in, and that's where I think we failed, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Mr. Nugent, name and address or district.
Um, thank you, Councilman Wilmot. I'm Nugent, uh, fifty-four forty-four Erlanger, District Three. Uh, so, uh, first off, I do wanna agree with Mr. Teft, um, just based on my experience and observations over the last few years, there definitely could stand to be greater attention to compliance when it comes to city-owned properties, um, when in many cases I see city-owned properties that would technically, you know, be write-ups for more code violations than the private properties adjacent to them, it, it does kind of, it's a problem. Um, so, that, that's a point that I thought was worth reiterating. Um, the main reason I, I, I wanted to speak was that many of you know my background is in architecture and design, I actually do a large portion of my work for a company called Historic Pro Nola that specializes in, in historic preservation and restoration. Um, and so what I actually wanted to talk about is something the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting was these new windows at Heritage Hall, and, and please understand, guys, I am not trying to hate on progress, I'm a big, big, big fan of progress, but it has to be said that there is a difference between doing something and doing something right. I believe Councilman Lahat and Councilman Swarth, uh, just alluded to this a few minutes ago, along with some of the previous speakers, uh, when we were talking about, when we were talking about Station Thirty-seven. Um, so I noticed these windows as soon as I pulled up here today, but I also noticed the way that near, nearly every window is being reframed, and that did cause my heart to skip a beat. Uh, specifically, nearly every window is being reframed in a manner inconsistent with the historic openings. If I was a private developer attempting to do the same thing in any historic district in New Orleans, my permit application would be rejected outright. Similarly, private historic tax credit projects right here in the Rivertown District would not be able to do what the city is doing to Heritage Hall, so it sets an unbelievably bad and highly visible precedent right at the heart of Kenner's only historic district, and I'm a firm believer in the fact that government should lead by example. Um, I have no doubt that cost was a factor in the decision to reframe the windows in this manner, but as someone who works in historic preservation, I firmly believe that the city has a responsibility to be a better steward, steward of its historic properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Next, we have Nicholas, and, and I can't read your last name, Nick. How to spell it for me?
Z A L V A.
Thank you.
Yes, Nicholas Zalva, one four six Elity, Kenner Firefighter Association President. Good morning, councilmembers. I wanna take the, a moment to recognize some of the recent community efforts led by the Kenner Firefighter Association. Last month, we held our Serving the Heat Pickleball fundraiser at Chateau Country Club. Thanks to our board, volunteers, sponsors, and players, we'll once again be able to donate to the Spirit of Charity Burn Foundation, which supports burn survivors across our region. It was a great success, and I appreciate councilmembers Brennan and McKenney for showing their support. We also halfway through our Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and our annual shirt fundraiser has already sold about a hundred and forty shirts to the public and our members. Just like this week, we made a donation to Jennifer Martinson, a longtime NICU nurse and current Jefferson Parish School Nurse. It's special being able to give back to those who serve our community. Lastly, I wanna thank the citizens of Kenner, Stephen Dunn, Greg Teft, Stacy Alessandro, Amy Hotard, for continually standing behind your firefighters. Your support in the last council meeting and this one will help improve the standard of living in our station, and without it, I'm not sure if Station Thirty-seven would have been repaired properly. You truly are the firefighters' champions when it comes to holding the line on standards, and I hope you continue to help defend what's right and fair for your city's firefighters. We'll fight the fires, and you'll fight for us. There's one question that came to my mind after hearing all the discussion. The contracts with DOM Development appear to be with General Services. Is KFD paying General Services for this work at Station Thirty-seven, or is KFD making payment to DOM Development under Or is KFD making payment to DOM Development under a General Services contract? If finance, or anyone else could answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
General Services is making the payment, but it gets charged back to fire.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, that concludes the list. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment? Chief? Chief Morris?
Good morning. Counsel, I'd like to thank you all in addition to what Chief Conley stated earlier that we, uh, we do appreciate all the assistance and financial support that you give to us to buy equipment that's needed for not only the guys, but to help protect the community as well. I have a little presentation. I'm waiting on Kenner. It's on my drive. Where the folder is at? One at the bottom. And then I click on, see, I'm going to do the first two pages. And then when I click on the, when I get to... All right. So, then let's just plug this back in.
I'll do it.
All right.
For right now, I'm just going to turn it down. And then when it's time, I'll turn it back up.
All right, counsel. I want to inform the public of the status of the Kenner Fire Department. There's been a lot of misinformation posted on social media. But well, before I start that, let me respond to one of the questions that Matt Hotard stated about ladder 377 being outdoors. It was outdoors because somebody had the wisdom to purchase a truck that don't fit in any of the stations inside the Kenner Fire Department. The reason why we had to move them back into their station because that state, that truck cannot park outside. Once you park a truck outside, it no longer counts as part of your service units. So, every day that that truck sits outdoors, it doesn't count for us as a service unit, which greatly harms our Class 1 rating because it's not in service those particular days. So, every call that was made, that truck does not count as a unit that we have in service because it's parked outside. So, if they knew that, somebody shouldn't have bought that big of a truck. It should have fit in other, all the other stations. That's why we moved them from that truck to a smaller truck so we could put, park the truck inside of the temporary station while the repairs were being done. Anyway, I want to inform the public of the status of the Kenner Fire Department. There's been a lot of misinformation posted on social media as well as brought before this council on many occasions in the past years that should be addressed. If you believe what you heard or read, you would think that we're the worst department in the nation. There's been a lot of rock throwing, and you know what they say about that and living in glass houses. I will call this time that I plan to address you at each council meeting that I have the receipts. I plan to get into details regarding each item. There's too much to show you or talk about at one meeting, so I will address you a few minutes at every meeting, giving you the facts regarding wide range of topics in reference to the Kenner Fire Department. And remember, I have the receipts. I will start from the very beginning of my employment with the Kenner Fire Department. I started here full-time on December 10th, 2018, after 31 and a half years in New Orleans. The morning, that morning on December 10th, 2018, there was a meeting at Fire Headquarters that included the C O, the Deputy Director for Emergency Management, all the district chiefs, the Assistant Chief, and the Fire Chief. One, one of the first people I met was District Chief Jerusaleh. He walks up to me, extends his hand, said who he was, and that I wasn't going to like him because he was going to get me fired. I told him, "I'm fine." I said, no, I told him, I said, I asked him, "How could you say that? You don't, you don't know me." He said he was going to get me fired because he wasn't, it wasn't personal. He was attacking the position for which I was hired for, which was the Chief of Administration over suppression. I told him, "I'm fine with that." Having been a union member my entire adult life, I started with International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 130. And I moved to New Orleans Professional Firefighters Association Local 632. I told him, "Just don't make it personal." Guess what? Within a few days, I was shown a post on social media of me under the caption of "Guess Who's Coming to Kenner", a play off of Sidney Poitier's movie, "Guess Who's Coming to Dinner". We have achieved under my tenure, and it starts with going from a Class 3 Fire Department to a Class 1. In our last rating, we, we have achieved one of the highest Class 1s in the nation. All departments in the nation are rated on the same metrics of community risk. And you heard that lately with the flood protection. Well, this goes more towards your homeowner's insurance. Class 10 being the lowest, Class 1 being the highest. And each one of those, it's a 10-point grading system. And it's 0 to 10 is a Class 10, 10 to 20 is a Class 9, on up to 90 to 106, which is a Class 1. Well, we were at 98.16 this last time. It's, and I want to talk to you about, it's the meeting that we had with Mayor Glazer, that I had with Mayor Glazer about putting forth a milledge. And actually, it started before then, because I don't know if you remember, Councilman Wilmot, the meeting we had on top of a garage on veterans several years before this happened, when I asked, when I talked to you about needing a milledge to have and dedicated funding for the fire department. It's about meeting with each one of you to get you on board for that milledge before we even put the milledge out. It's about settling decades of old lawsuits. It's about addressing the decades-old promotional pay plan issues. It's about implementing a pay plan that reflects a 40% increase in starting salary for the firefighters. It's creating an apparatus plan to purchase new apparatus that includes the cost projection to do that over years. It's about saving the city over millions of dollars in taxpayer money. And the list goes on. And mainly protecting the cities, citizens of this city. Today, I want to address two issues that are currently before us. Last week, we saw on the news, in Kenner, if we can pull this up.
Is that?
Yeah.
Let me get it up there in a second.
I don't want to play it over there. I'll stop. I want to stop it.
Having some technical difficulties getting some of this. There we go.
All right, this was broadcast last week.
If you own a stationary generator, safety officials say it needs to be at least 25 feet from your home. The urgent recommendation follows a four-year study into carbon monoxide poisoning right here in southeast Louisiana. For the first time, we're learning the full scope of the deadly threat from stationary generators in southeast Louisiana. A new federal report says carbon monoxide seeped into 105 homes in the days after Hurricane Ida, 2021, when much of the region was without power.
We almost lost our entire immediate family. And we didn't even know what happened. The consumer product safety mission was seeking...
Pull that down, let me pull the other one up. You see, after Hurricane Ida finally, where it caused many deaths, we saw that here first in Kenner. And if you read this, September 5th, 2021, Chief Terrence Morris brought all the fire chiefs from this region together to put that message out to the members of the community that it was a problem with whole-home generators that was installed. We filmed it right here in the city of Kenner with all the regional chiefs because we noticed the problem and brought that to the public's attention. So, when I say, when I talk about us protecting the community, we did this within days of noticing the problem to get the message out to protect the community. Now, five years later, four years later, the federal government has finally acted on what initially happened right here under my leadership. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about this morning is Station 37, which we all have been talking about this morning. But I'm not going to talk to you about that. I'm going to let Chief Dyer speak to you about that because he has the intimate knowledge of what's going on with that station.
Chief Dyer?
All right, good afternoon. Over the past several years, Station 37 has actually been an issue. A lot of HVAC issues that's going on at the station. That goes back to the original design of this station. Especially during the summer months, inside of that station, we reached temperatures up to 78 degrees on the inter, on the inside, which is completely unacceptable for our personnel. We all agree to that. Last year, at some point, I got with Director Glorioso with General Services. We found out that the attic was never properly insulated. The little insulation that we had up there wasn't doing anything. So, they put out a bid. We got this, we got the whole attic area spray-foam insulation, including the exterior walls up in the attic. Well, that actually helped improve that dramatically. But in July of this year, back when the heat of the summer happened, some water was, was observed leaking through the acoustic tiles. And I, some is saying it very lightly. It was all the way from the front door to the kitchen area, water was dripping through the ceilings. All the ceiling tiles were extremely wet. Contacted General Services right away. They called out a company out to start working on, I think it was DOM Development at first, to rip it out. And then we noticed that, hey, we have some mold in this area. A company was called, a private company was called in to remediate the mold, to do testing and everything, and that was all completed. Once the mold debatement was completed, follow-up testing confirmed successful remediation. While, while the personnel were temporarily relocated, relocated to another, to other stations, the decision was made to go ahead, let's renovate the bathrooms that were in very dire need of being done and doing some other work throughout that station. We also consulted a mechanical engineer to develop a long-term solution for the HVAC problems that were going into that station. With WCO Valo, she contacted somebody. We got the contract worked out. That person came in, he came in, he gave us a full report on what we needed to do in order to help this HVAC system in the, in the station. He recommended replacing the second-floor HVAC unit and replacing, and relocating the first-floor unit and installing a mini-split system in the kitchen. The report further indicated, identified that the previous issue stemmed from the second-floor HVAC system being maintained at low temperatures with the spray-foam insulation that took place that was causing a lot of condensation between the floors, which was the heavy water that was dripping through. It was also noted, noted that the existing kitchen hood vent system was undersized and required replacement. So, DOM Development under the direction of General Services was contracted to begin the second floor, to begin the renovations of the station, which included the bathrooms, a lot of the work that you've seen on social media. Currently, a lot of this work is still ongoing. The upstairs floor was completely removed. New flooring was installed throughout the, the whole second floor. During these renovations, we found out that we had active termites in the station that was covered between the first and second floors that was beneath the HVAC system, which caused some structural damage that had to be made, that had to be repaired. Once the flooring, HVAC systems, and bathrooms were operational, General Services arranged for the station to be professionally cleaned. On October 3rd, Chief Morris and Assistant Chief Ankeese conducted an inspection of Station 37 and determined that the station was suitable for personnel to return while the remaining work did continue. At that time, the Director of General Services, Glorioso, and myself had, had not yet completed a final walkthrough, or walkthrough, or any kind of inspection to get the items fixed or meet with the contractor. Many issues that appeared on social media were already identified on that list that we, that I'd already written up. And they were pending review with the contractor. Since then, that list has been reviewed with the contractor, and most of the issues have been addressed and resolved. Each shower is being reevaluated and reconstructed individually to ensure compliance with building codes. Code enforcement is inspecting the progress step by step. Electrical switches and outlets have been relocated to the proper positions, and the tile work has been corrected. Bathroom stall doors have been bit out and awarded, and fabrication is underway. I believe we're actually in the 17-day grace, that grace period right now, waiting for that to be done. So, shower curtains were temporarily installed to give privacy in the bathroom. And the personnel understood, they were informed that the shower curtains, the curtains that were hung up were temporary until these doors could be built and installed. The replacement of both HVAC units have been completed, and the installation of the kitchen mini-split is scheduled. Bids for the kitchen, for the new kitchen hood vent system are currently open with the latest bid closing on October 20th after the prior two attempts received no submissions. Purchase orders have been issued for the fire alarm system, fire sprinkler system, and kitchen countertops. And the work is awaiting to be scheduled. New LED lighting has been installed throughout the entire station along with various cosmetic improvements to enhance overhaul living conditions for the firefighters. One of the things I just want to make point on, when we go out for bid for something, this doesn't happen overnight like, like you can get it done in your house. We're looking six to eight weeks before, once you submit a bid, to get the actual work, like to get started. Because we have that grace period, you got two council meetings and everything. So, the renovation of Station 37 remains ongoing. Both Director Glorioso and I are actively monitoring the progress to ensure all projects are completed and up to code and standard. Lastly, the one thing I respect is that any city official or member of the public wishing to visit into fire stations to review things, please contact me to direct, to schedule a tour. Walk through with me so I can get these notes instead of finding out about it on social media. I do not have social media, so I do not see it. Contact me, this can be done. This is actually at the request of both myself and personnel assigned to the stations to ensure some safety and some operational continuity. So, that is all I have at this time, if you have any questions about Station 37 or what's going on with it.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have questions? Thank you, Chief. Wait, wait, don't, not, not from there, sir. If you, you, yeah, come on up if you have a question. But just state your question and.
My question is, is, did we get inspections? For all of this work was done?
All right, if you will, sir, let him, let him take the microphone and.
The work that is being done now, it is being inspected step by step. Roland with Code Enforcement, he's a plumber inspector, has been by, has been by several times. I've met with him, I think, at least three or four times on one shower. I know Mark has dealt with him a lot more than me.
Wait, sir, we're not going to go back and forth.
We can talk after, we can talk after.
Yeah, after the meeting, if y'all would like to talk. Then you're going to take it up at the next meeting.
I spoke with Director. I'm going to answer your question. I spoke with Director Glorioso, and it wears an oversight on permitting. He took full responsibility for it. We had meetings, several meetings about this. It's been handled. Permits have been filed. The correct permits have been filed. The work is being done up to code and being done completed correctly. That was, I don't know the exact date it was officially filed, I'm not sure of the date. That was, that's General Services.
Mr. Dunn, if you will, I, I can't let people go, I can't, well, if you want to, I, I've already let you come up and, and, and ask questions. I'll let you come up one more time. If you have another question, you're welcome to come up to the microphone one more time. I can't let you keep going back and forth and have a private conversation.
I completely understand, but things are being stated like as if there was a permit and inspections, and there are none.
Excuse me.
Madam Clark, is this, and, is it?
No, point of order. He's already spoken. You can come back at the next council meeting and address the council with your questions.
I've already allowed the gentleman to come up. If y'all want to vote on it, you're more than welcome to vote, vote against.
Listen, I know y'all don't want to hear it, I'll go ahead and sit back down, but it really needs to be addressed.
Mr. Dunn, it's not that we don't want to hear it, sir.
It's a procedure.
May I finish my sentence? We will get the date that the permit was filed, and it will be noted and stated at the next council.
Is that the way procedures take place for everything that gets permitted in the city? Or does the permit happen before the work takes place?
Thank you for coming to that.
Yeah, you don't want to hear it. You don't want to hear it. But there is a process that takes place, and we aren't even following our own process.
There is a process that takes place, and we're, we're trying to follow our process. And by letting somebody just keep coming back and forth to the microphone, that's not typical. We don't, I've already granted you extra time. Yeah, yeah, I have done so, and I appreciate it. But if you have additional things you want to say, yeah, you, you're more than welcome to come back next time.
I will.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nothing? Word adjourned.